On the meeting for 7:00, I'm going to pledge allegiance. We got a little flag over here on the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm filling in because Patty is not feeling well, so she will not be here today. First up, we have the agenda. I have a couple additions for the agenda. I have an add-on, a couple, four add-ons. Item M, we are going to approve the employee handbook. Letter N, we are going to vote on two additional vacation days for Brenda Loper and Linda Tium. And letter O, we would like to order some election equipment and supplies. And letter P, I'd like to discuss an audit for this year and/or bidding out for different auditors.
Well, with those, 1, 2, 3, 4 additions to the agenda, I will make a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
Oh, support that.
All right, so we have motion by Stover, support by Stevens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Motion carries. All right, we are up to citizen comments. We have Mr. Marker here. Did you want to, you can talk to me and tell me in the office, but if you want to talk to Joe and...
Recap, recap the good ideas.
Yeah, just recap.
Good idea, yes.
The, a request from the township, you own that 97 acres that Consumers previously had on Meisner Road. I'm requesting to dig a ditch. It's going to be approximately 18 inches deep on the south end. If it's going to be about, it's not a quarter mile because there was a tributary that runs through there. You ever been back there?
I've scouted back there a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's recorded on the map. The tributary, from that point, that tributary is probably 18 inches deep. And it runs east and west, or probably all east, and it crosses Holmes Road. And it comes out back behind the conservation first point. Back in there is the start of it, it's a tributary, recorded on the map. What I'm requesting is, I got a contractor already, let me and him look at it. From that little tributary, which is probably a couple hundred and a half, 200 to 300 foot from Meisner Road, you know, it slopes down, that little tributary, and then it goes back on your property. To start at that point of that little tributary, about 18 inches would be the deepest. There, just one bucket, you know, back to my 10 acres, which would be on your, I'm saying, your 97 acres, your west fence line, you know, from that tributary go about 1,000 foot. Because it's 1,320 foot from the center of the road, back to my 10 acres that come off that 40. I want to tile it, and I need an outlet to get from there to that little tributary. And it goes in that drain, probably meet a Colleen away, if not closer. Anyway, to go north from that little tributary, say 1,000 footer to my property line, and terminate there, which will greatly enhance your 97 acres surface water to get in there. Because what it is, there's a mound or a knoll in there. It's no mountain or nothing, but it's a common knoll in Casco Township. And he's going to dig right close to your west fence line, up to my 10 acres. And it'd be probably 3 and 1/2, 4 foot deep at my 10 acres. But Robbie Compo works that ground right now. And it would greatly, or whoever rents it from you, enhance their capability, get that surface water off that property of yours. And, you know, it can come across my 10 acre headland there, as close to the fence in that Wallen Tovich or whatever.
Wallen Tovich.
Robbie works that property too. I give Rob permission to cross that 10 acres with his combine. Instead of tearing up a yard, Wallen Tovich's yard with his heavy combine, he comes across the headland on that 10 acres to get to Wallen Tovich's, where he works there. You know, he could run across the furrows in there to gather that water, and end up in that creek that goes...
Now, Jim, is that a county drain?
It's a, it's a county drain. I guess that tributary would be a county drain too, because it's charted on the map. You know what I'm saying? And I would guess they probably got, like, the county drains, I don't know what they have, a 60 or 120 foot right-of-way on those county drains. I'm sure they got a right-of-way. But, yeah.
I, myself, I have no problem with that. However, I think we should check with the drain commission, just to see if that is, you know, we'd have to pipe in order to dig into one of their drains, that wouldn't be surprising.
But I mean, it's a public drain. I, you know, I don't want to juggle out hurdles, do I? I'm not out to hurt anybody, but I know what you're getting at.
Right. Well, I just, I just want no surprises that just, they probably would like, like, they probably would have no problem, but they'd like to know that someone. And we don't want no surprises in case if it's a natural water course, if it's the V and R, you know. I hope not.
I mean, it's all tillable, but Robbie works there, so you're talking about wetlands and that?
Yeah, just, I would just double-check.
When we bought it, it would have been designated a wetlands if we, when we bought it.
Well, yeah, sometimes you have to have a wetland determination.
But that was prior, back in '83 or '84, where they did them wetland determinations.
Yeah, because I have no problem with it at all. It looks like it's going to alleviate some water problems here and there. If it helps you, if it helps the Wallen Tovics, then I don't think the township has any trouble with you on our land, to do that on our western border.
Right, I mean, it's not no Erie Canal by no means.
Hey, why don't I call, I'll call the drain commission tomorrow, okay? And I'll, I'll check with them. And after the meeting, give me your number, contact them.
I have your number.
Okay, and we'll check, we'll see.
We can come over, and I got my side-by-side, we can go over there, or I'll meet you there. We can walk it and see what, exactly what I'm talking about.
All right, I'll, I'll, we'll talk, I'll see when I can meet you, and we'll walk it.
Yeah, me and Gary Bertassi, I don't know if anybody you ever heard of him.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he's a respectful contractor. He's done all my fence line cleaning and that. I like competitiveness, but they're a little pricey down the road, so I went with the cheaper.
Gary, when he dug the basement...
He does the job, he does the job.
When he dug the basement on my addition four years ago, I mean, I swear that he could have crushed the chief of a baby with that baton.
Yeah, with that bucket.
I mean, the best is if you were Colleen, or anybody wants to meet there, we can go back there. It's frozen enough now. Two weeks ago, I wouldn't want to walk, but me and Gary walked. I made it about halfway back, and my leg was starting to hurt. He went to the other end of it and, you know, looked at it. But it's frozen hard enough now where I...
We just don't want to have, you know, the drain commission all of a sudden showing interest in this that they never showed before, and it scots your plans, you know, for your drainage.
Yeah, so most likely, they probably won't have an issue with it, but you just don't want those surprises.
My, yeah, it's, the water all wants to go, I'm, you people that know how to use one of them smartphones, you can get the elevations on any elevation in Michigan, I think, if you know how to use that, or what Google thing to get on. You can get the elevations to see what way that water, and it all wants to go south and east in Casco Township. Unless you get up by Jerome Creek up here, by Fredmore Highway and Hessen Road, it's naturally going to go north to, there's that Jerome Creek, you know what I'm saying? But by vast, by far, the water wants to go south and east in Casco.
Yeah, St. Clair Highway is the divide line. South of St. Clair Highway goes to Anker Bay, and north of it goes to Bell River.
Yeah.
So, if you'll follow up on that, but I don't think the township has any problem with you on our property, it's only going to do us and the world good.
Yeah, point, when we get done, point on the map so I can know what drain I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Distributary.
It's a standard, you know, St. Clair County up the most current, I'm sure.
All right.
But hey, I think it's a, yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Josh, don't, like, what property doesn't be drainage in Casco Township?
I didn't want to say it, but you could, the drains, oh, they in Casco, it's the drain.
Come over and drain my property.
Tile your property, that's all.
Like a rice pan.
All right, and we will, I think Joel will look into that, and we will get back if you want it as soon as we can, but line up your contractors.
It's done already.
Good, good. So next up, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the regular meeting minutes from the last meeting, December 14, 2021, the financial report, and the payment of bills. I do have two corrections on the meeting minutes. On the last page, I already gave them to Vicki, so we're already going to take care of just, instead of trustee, it should say treasurer and clerk. So, yeah.
And, listen, the bills are a different kind of...
Yes, this is, our new, we, we...
Do we have the new software?
We're trying to figure it out. It's our new software, so.
Okay, that was, and I trust that we're going to record it.
Well, I'll tell you what, we've been working with the software and chucking along, chucking along. As best we can, it's going to be great, once, once they get it all, since you leave all the little bugs out. But...
Yeah. Okay.
So, I need a motion.
I need to make a motion to, do we have to do the minutes separate?
No, it's a whole consent agenda.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the contention with the consent agenda, with the two corrections noted on the minutes.
Support. So Stevens submitted a motion, and Stover supported. So we will do a roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
So it's three yeses, motion carries. Next up, we have clerk's comments. First, we have just the, the letter from Mr. Tiuma regarding the appraisal that we talked about last month. And I think our assessor, Shelley, just wanted us to look it over. I looked it over, it sounds fine to me. If anybody has anything to add?
Yeah, so we just have to get this assessed, and once that's done, then we, I mean, get it appraised, and then we can assess that.
Yes, yeah, then we can figure it out, yeah. All right, so I will let Shelley know that it looks good to us, too. All right, next, I just wanted to throw this in on the agenda, just so you guys are aware of it. The MTA is doing their annual conference in the end of April. So I copied this off, and it has all of the different classes. So if you want to take a look at it, see if there's anything that would interest you, if you wanted to go. I did highlight some, but I think as far as the clerk's office, I don't think there's enough on there for us to go. I mean, there's a couple things, but they're like at the same time, too. But you guys might want to look and see if there's anything that, you know, is good. So if, if you are interested, just let me know.
Okay, I'll have to see.
All right, and then, I also have, I don't know, did you guys get these fire reports?
No.
Do you want them?
When they're, when they're not available, I don't have to.
Because they email them to me, I can, I can email them to everybody instead of printing them off?
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, okay. I'll start doing that, I'll just email them, okay.
I always like seeing that it's interesting.
All the different info, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that.
All right, I will make a note, and I will email those for next, you have it too. One of us will email it. All right, so now we are on to new business. First up, we have Resolution 2022-01, annual meeting and public hearing for the 20, oh, I should say 22 to 23 budget, yeah. No, 21 to 22 budget.
21 to 22.
Okay.
No, it should be 22 to 23.
Already.
All right, I'll reprint that, so it'll say 22 to 23 budget. I'll migrate this. Yes, okay. So, we'll need a...
Okay, I make a motion to approve the resolution. Put 2022-01 of the annual meeting and public hearing for the 2022, 2023 budget.
Support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. This will be a roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover? Three yeses, motion carries. All right, now we're up to Resolution 2022-02, clerk's salary. I'm requesting an increase from 32,120 to 35,310, plus $1,000 per election paid in the first pay period following the election.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-02, the clerk's salary for the coming year.
I'll support that. I think I should be contacted.
Right, I'm afraid of what's coming up. All right, so we need to do a roll, roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
When they post your lecture, we should talk about security measures. And just, I worry about that, I worry, you know, maybe we should, well, this is another, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, okay. So three yeses, motion carries. Now we are on to Resolution 2022-03, treasurer's salary. Treasurer is requesting increase from 28,551 to 29,407.53.
I make a motion to approve Casco Township Resolution 2022-03, treasurer's salary.
I support. Can I watch a support?
Yes. The person running says we only have two people.
Right, exactly. All right, so this will also be a roll call. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. Next up, we have Resolution 2022-04, trustee's salary. And I, should we have put a name?
Yeah, we should have.
All right, so on the, in the middle right there, where it says trustee, I'll put Stevens for one, where the, like, right here.
Okay, you ready to put D as Stevens?
What?
Yes, Stevens is going to be D.
Oh.
Yeah, and then E will put for...
All right, and I will make a motion to approve Casco Township Resolution 2024-04, trustee's salary for Stevens at $846 per year.
Plus 82.
Yes.
I will support that. Motion by Stover, supported by Anderson, roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
I'll abstain.
You're going to abstain?
Your family just...
Okay, you're going to abstain.
Yes.
All right, and then Stover. Yes. Two yeses, one abstain, abstention, motion carries. All right, we are up to E, which is Resolution 2022-05, trustee's salary. This is for trustee Dan Goldston.
I make a res, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-05, trustee's salary for trustee Goldston, 846 per year, plus 82 dollars per year.
Support.
Your mom is not watching this.
Right. Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover, roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. Next is the supervi, or, sorry, Resolution 2022-06 for supervisor's salary. Supervisor is not requesting a raise, so 28,551.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-06, supervisor's salary.
All right, I'll support that. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. Next up, we have the Casco Township holiday schedule. We follow the St. Clair County Court's schedule. If they observe a holiday on a day that we're closed, such as Friday, we observe it before. Before or after.
In the day before Thanksgiving?
Yes, because they take, because they do Thanksgiving, so.
Well, we know that is Karen Holt Day.
Right, yeah, it can still be Karen, it can still be Karen Holt Day.
Oh, yeah, no, when I came by, I, it's, because she was the one that always...
Yeah, it can still be.
They'll make a plaque and everything.
So if everyone's good with that, I need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 2022 Casco Township holiday office close schedule.
I'll support it. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. This is just a regular vote, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, nays, motion carries. Okay, I don't know what, I don't have anything on H.
I do not either. Oh, well, we always, we always put $20,000 into the emergency fund because the roads will fall apart in March.
Is that something I need to have documentation for and send it to the road commission?
No, we just, I don't believe so. We just have it in an internal account.
Right, contingency, we never, we've had several years where the roads just went crap.
Right, right.
And sometimes, not at all. So, you know, we just, we have it set aside just in case.
Okay, so...
And if you look at last year's budget, you'll see where it fits in there. It's just always a contingency, and it's always $20,000.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so I need a motion and support.
I make a motion to move the amount of $20,000 into the emergency road fund.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. This will be a roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. All right, next up is a request for a raise for the deputy clerk to raise her salary from 1630 to 18 per hour. I wrote a letter this last year, Vicki has done so much for our township, for our offices, with the whole basement, and going through all the papers, and with the contractors, our transition from no software in the building department to BSNA, our transition from the financial, we're in fund balance, and now we're in BSNA. She's the handbook, everything, she's, she's just...
So I will gladly make a motion to allow the deputy clerk the salary of $18 per hour.
I'll support that.
Thank you.
Very well deserved.
All right, so motion by Stover, supported by Stevens, roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries.
Thank you very much, you guys. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is request for the clerk and deputy clerk to attend the MMAC Institute on March 20, 2022, through March 25, 2022, in the amount of $650 each. Vicki did get a scholarship from the St. Clair County Clerks Association for $500, so we can use that towards her registration. So that would make it a total of $800, plus travel and hotel expenses. However, I did speak to the lady that I was in contact with before about the scholarship. They are going to be discussing scholarships either this week or next week. She thinks that we're pretty good for a scholarship, I think, for both of us, for the first year. But I don't know for sure, so we, we do want to go, and like we talked about last meeting, it's a three-year commitment, so, because it, it kind of just keeps building on each other, yeah.
Well, that's an investment in our future.
Sure, I make a motion to accept the clerk and the deputy clerk attending MMAC Institute in March for a cost of $650 each.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. This will be a roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. Next is the resignation of supervisor. Patty Allegreen is the current supervisor. She wrote a letter to the board. Dear Casco Township Board, I have worked for Casco for almost 28 years. It is with great regret that I submit my resignation, but I feel that I must for my well-being, plus the health of my husband Dale, so I am retiring. My last day at Casco will be Monday, January 31, 2022. I wish Casco and all its employees much success in the coming years. Sincerely, Patricia Allegreen.
I don't understand.
Yes. I know Dale's, his health is, his eyesight or whatever, and she's, she's having to take him to a lot of appointments and stuff, and, yeah.
Okay, I just said make a motion to accept the resignation of supervisor Allegreen.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. This will just be a regular vote. Probably, we're seeing aye. Aye, three ayes, motion carries. Next up is resignation of Dale Allegreen for the planning commission and the ZDA. Mr. Allegreen wrote a letter. Casco Township Board, planning commission, ZDA, is with great regret that I submit my resignation because of my health. My last day at Casco Township will be Monday, January 24, 2022. I wish Casco Township and all its employees much success in the coming years. Sincerely, Dale Allegreen.
Okay, make a motion to accept the resignation of the former superintendent supervisor.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, motion carries. I do want to go back one step about the resignation of the supervisor. We did look up in the, the red book, the township red book, right here for filling a vacancy. It says the township board must appoint someone to fill a township board vacancy within 45 calendar days after the vacancy occurred. So we have 45 days.
We have 45 days from the 31st.
Because, so, starting February 1st. Starting February 1st, so... So we don't have to do it today, or right away, but we, we need to start thinking about it. So, and then I'll make sure Dan gets this. All right. Next up, we have our add-ons. M, we need to approve the employee handbook. We brought it to the board last month. We have some corrections, which we're taking care of. So we now have, we added in the vacation. And on this, on page three, we just added in, any time over 12 days must be requested and approved by the township board, and that kind of takes care of just anything, yeah.
For long-term employees.
What else did we do?
We added on the acknowledgement sheet, and then we talked about the jury duty in military, but this is, this section of jury duty...
military, but this is, this section of jury duty is just to, to know if you do get jury duty, you get paid while you're there, so.
Alright, so if, yeah, we did add this page on the back, so everybody could sign it, and we'll keep a copy in the HR file.
Okay.
So if, um, anybody has any questions, we'll be answering.
That looks good.
Oh, yeah. You did a good job.
Are you going to use a raise, huh?
That's right.
Appreciate it.
Alright, so I will need a motion and support to approve the-
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, Casco Township employee handbook.
Support. Uh, motion by Stevens, supported by Stover. Do we need to do a roll call?
No, it's not a roll call.
Okay, um, so this will just be a regular vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Motion carries.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's where I was there, frankly, in fact, I totally stress where, like, townships give themselves big trouble with the authorities of not having to fight this rule, not, um, annotate their performance and give them the, you know, the-
That's why we went through, like, the, like, job descriptions and some-
Yeah, and she, and, uh, that male shirt, and he says, they deal with that constantly, township gives themselves some big trouble with the, the, yeah.
Alright, next up, we have add-on vacation time for, um, Brenda and Linda. We had this in front of us last month, but because we didn't have it in the handbook, we wanted to wait, um, so they wanted, they each wanted two extra days, um, for the year for, from now on, and put it to fourteen days.
Okay, I have no problem. I'll make a motion to approve this for vacation time for Brenda Lohr and Linda, too, too.
Alright, I'll support that. So we have motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Motion carries. Alright, and now we have election equipment. So, um, I got an email from our printing company that we get our absentee ballot envelopes from last Thursday, requesting us to put our orders in for the August primary ready. They are expecting at least a five-month delay. So that got us thinking, um, when we cleaned the basement, a lot of our election stuff was damaged with mold and it, we didn't want to use it because it was moldy. Um, we threw it out, so we had some bags that we need to replace. Um, we also were looking at getting different voting booths with the whole COVID and trying to space people out and, you know, have enough room so we don't have the big lines like we did last time. Uh, we were looking, there's a lot of, uh, voting booths that we liked, but unfortunately they already got stuck. So we found this, and I didn't print one for everybody, but I'll pass it around. Um, these were actually kind of cool. It's a, a table and you can lift it or lower it, you know, so if you want to just do stand-up, people can stand, or if you want to lower it. And this is, uh, cardboard-like privacy.
They velcro on.
They velcro on, and it comes with it. However, after the election, we could use these tables for whatever we need or, or whatever. So these, these are, um, a hundred and fourteen fifty each, and we figured we'd get twelve, six for each precinct.
Okay.
We have three precincts, but the third is the absentee, so we have to, yeah. We also found, we thought they were better than the cardboard stand-ups, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because most of them, they just have the cardboard stand-ups, and those will get damaged.
What was the total of all those?
The total for this is thirteen hundred and seventy-four, but I have other stuff. We did find these stand-up, which are, they're kind of cool. They stack, so they, the, the top here, the fold-up stuff, it would fold down, and then they're on wheels, so then they would stack, kind of like how you would do, like, lawn chairs, you stack them on top of each other and do each other. That's how those work. These are more expensive, so these are two hundred and seventy-two dollars, but they're not really usable for other stuff. That's why we kind of like the tables, because it's, you know, they're usable for other things. So that, a total for twelve would be thirty-two sixty-four. Um, we're going to need to get more ballot bags. We figured we'd get six of them.
There were some zippers buried.
And there were some that were moldy, so, you know, um, and same thing here as the bags. We had three bags that we had to throw away because they were moldy. Um, these are on wheels, so at the end of the night, when we're putting all the ballots, it's very heavy, so it's better to have them on wheels, and this is a very sturdy one. It's got like a, um, frame around it, so it says it holds up to a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty pounds. Uh, and then we need to get one bag. We don't have this. It's, um, when we do the, the testing on the, the ballot machines, the public accuracy test, we have to keep those test ballots separate, um, and we've always put them in just a regular ballot bag, but they actually have a test ballot bag that we need, so there's that. So I have a total, and I will pass these, and you guys can get those. Do you suggest that, too?
Yeah.
Um, so if we go with the first, the first table, the booth table thing, the total for all of that stuff that we need would be two thousand, like, twenty-one hundred dollars. Um, if we would go with the second one, it'd be four thousand.
I like the question.
Yeah.
And we do, we have, we haven't spent any money on elections, and we found out today that our money, this can go right to it, so.
Okay, that's a good point.
Okay, so motion by Stover. Stevens, support. Alright, so this will be a roll call, so Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses. Motion carries. We'll order that tomorrow. Alright, last up, I just wanted to talk about the auditors. Um, last month, I did bring to the board that I got notification that, um, because our population went down according to the census, we only had to do audits every two years, which is still the case. However, I was thinking that maybe we should do one this year, just with moving us from one software to the other. Um, I did speak to Connie today and we discussed this, because our offices are the, basically the only ones that are involved with the auditing anyway. Um, and we had, when we had our training with the BSNA guy, he, we were talking about things and, and he would mention, you know, you know, the auditors didn't do this or whatever, and he, and he thought that was, you know, like, maybe they should be doing a little bit more than what they're doing.
In that court regard.
Um, just-
Helping to problem solve when there was a discrepancy, um, giving us beginning numbers when, when we're all together saying we've had this problem, which is going to be greatly alleviated with the software.
Yes, it will be, yes.
Um, but we found that if there was, if there were questions that we had about getting two basic numbers so we could have a valid starting point, we never had that discussion with them.
And like this last past year, I know COVID's been, you know, the last two years. In twenty-twenty, um, they were here all day.
Mm-hmm.
Half of them left and went to Columbus because they scheduled a sit, your, our audit's on the same day. Um, and we pay a good chunk of money to have the auditors come.
Pay seven thousand dollars.
So either, you know, a half-day or a day, you know, I don't think it's enough, but-
And they got all of the information they needed from us about our accounts, our bank accounts, our CDs, or this, or that, our systems, this and that. They required quite a bit of information from us, which we provided them with. And then we were waiting to get the same courtesy back to say, now, I have a question about this account, and could I, well, um, just a simple, a simple little thing like, um, in my tax account, can I charge back to the general fund these, um, fees, the service fees? Can I charge that back to the general fund? Because it can't come out of my tax account, you know, that's tax money, right? And just simple questions like that, that I'd have a whole laundry list of, and out the door. They're out the door.
Yeah, and this year, in, um, twenty twenty-one, um, they were here a half-day, I think. And, and it, it was, I mean, we had all the, we were very organized. We had all the stuff they needed, so they didn't have to go digging for stuff, so, you know, that probably made it quicker, too. Um, but Devon, the trainer from BSNA, did suggest to maybe do some bidding on different auditors. And in the meantime, I did get an email, um, last Wednesday from a company, and, and I didn't, you know, guess, it just came from a company in Grand Rapids called Gaybridge and Company, and he said, "Good afternoon. Here at Gaybridge and Company, we currently have over two hundred governmental and nonprofit audit clients. Our professionals are committed to the audit industry. If you're planning on going out for bid this year's audit, we would be interested on bidding on it."
Well, I would say, I'm, I'm in support of, yeah, but we, our current auditor, we ought to, we saw, give him a call and say, "Hey, we, we want more attention from you," especially with the money given. Can you be here all day? We need you to advise us.
To, to answer our questions.
Right.
Right.
Well, and I, I had contacted him October, November, because I had, I had a question about, um, one of the accounts, and I, I sent him all the, the stuff, and I never heard back.
Okay.
You know, it's, I mean, they've been, I, I haven't been here but two years, so I haven't worked with them. I've never had any problems, but it seems like we should have more help.
Yeah, and I, you know, if I balance, and I always do, with the county treasurer, and I balance with all my school districts, and I get written out and show them this and show them, and that's fine, but I have questions.
Sure.
And they just never seem to be addressed.
Yeah.
We should look at others.
And then what do you think about, I guess if, if we do get, if we bid it out or whatever, and we get someone, I, I would like to do it this year.
Mm-hmm.
But if we're, if we stay with who we have now, I don't even know if it's necessary because if they're not going to answer our questions.
Oh, yeah.
And if we're going to stay with them, then I'd like the time to get the systems down pat, because I don't have the systems down pat.
Right, yeah.
And I, yeah, I, almost sounds like he, they load up on, I mean, when he said they run up to Columbus.
They did that last year and the year before.
And they get all the numbers. Like I say, they, they have all the information. They, I give them permission to check into the banks. They have full access to everything we have and everything we own, and they really don't, although, let me see, it was, no, it was the year before last, when, uh, one of the auditors said on the way out, "You know, you've got a, a very healthy fund balance. Get off your wallet and, and do some things in the township hall." And that was the only word of advice that I got, you know.
Which we did this year in four years.
You know, so.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, I'd look around. I'd, yeah, I'd, see what's-
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. I mean, he even said, even if we stayed with the current auditing company, it doesn't hurt to go out for a bid and then have them rebid it, and we might lower the price a little bit.
Tell them, we want you here a full day, and we want you to give us-
At least, yeah, we want the attention and, you know.
I came up here that one day when there was a possibly young people auditing.
Oh, I know. Oh, yeah. It's like a whole, somebody comes in.
You know?
Yeah, and maybe because they have so many people here, maybe that's why they don't have to, but we still need our questions.
But it's like, they always say, like, you know, you have a good doctor who will answer your questions.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, right.
And, and auditor is a professional, just like a doctor and a-
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Alright, we will, we're going to do that, yeah. And I think, um, Connie and I talked that I will probably contact MTA and find out when exactly we have to, like, time-wise, we usually have our audit in June. Is that something like we have to have it in June, or could we, like, push it off a couple months if we're going to do it? Because I'm not sure, so I'll contact MTA about that. Alright, and then I think that brings us to our unfinished business, which is the intergovernmental agreement. Um, I think we just wanted to get everyone's opinion on what they thought about, if it was, like, unofficial.
An official, casual.
Done official, so Casco Township.
Well, yeah, the one thing I worry about, you know, is if we don't enter into this, it can, oh, Richmond's going to try to, annex, corrupt, and things.
That's a whole different fight, you know, and we've always had a very good relationship with Richmond, uh, with their city manager, with their mayor. Um, I put this before anybody that I can, and we haven't always done that, you know. Uh, we put it before the planner and the planning commission, which was more than we did last time. Um, I'm just looking, it's not, I don't see anything beneficial to Casco Township in this. We have a water agreement with Ira that brings water to our commercial and industrial district at the request of the property owner. They assume the fees. Ira Township does the work, builds them, but the, but the land stays in Casco.
Right.
We're losing this land.
Yeah.
And I get, we get, what, fifty, fifty years worth of maybe, uh, two mills, something like that. I don't, I just don't see giving up land.
I agree with that.
I'm here, too.
Um, because, uh, yeah, that's, uh, the, the dynamics between Ira and Casco are a different, because they're township where township, township, annex, town, other township. But that's the only thing that I worry about.
Yeah, and, but, but in asking our township attorneys to look this over, they said, in essence, they said, "We will do whatever you direct us to do." I don't think they thought it was a good idea either, and if we were aggressively approached, instead of denying the approach, they would be prepared to help us in that.
Alright, I, yeah, it's this, I know I timed up for discussion, you know, this would be a nice, uh, core, uh, divide my between Casco and, uh, St. Richard, but, yeah, there would be a lot, I would believe, some would say, oh, we've got all that property, that's hot, this side, that is a commercial board.
They want, they want a commercial board.
Right.
You're right, um, the, the city government in Richmond's a lot fair now that it was back in the nineties. The nineties, they had a city government that really, and you could even ask members up their mouth, it was, in the nineties, bad times.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was a tough time. They went through that whole annexation thing with, uh, with Karen and a lot of attorney fees.
Yeah.
Um, I'm hoping we can just say, uh, thank you for considering this, um, but the majority of the body of governing officials in this township say no thank you at this time.
Um, will you be coming, having a meeting?
Well, oh, that, but that should come before the thirty-first under the auspices of the supervisor, because she was the one, you know, that told, well, they asked us to come in. However, her name is still on the supervisor's little slot, and it should be maybe the entire township board needs to sign it, but it definitely means they have a supervisor solution.
Okay, so, well, once she gets back to the office next week, we'll take-
We can just, we can, uh, word a letter. As a matter of fact, I would think it would be maybe a better idea to have the attorney's word a letter.
Probably a good idea, yes.
Right.
Yes, that's a great idea.
There are a lot of things you wish in life, or wish annexations, admission was in the back of life. It is.
Yeah, but it is.
You could do it in Casco, and it's only been done, where our township will bring property back from the city, and it's, it's been done.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, but it's a battle.
Oh, it's, it's difficult. It's very difficult. I mean, it's been done since before.
Alright, so we will talk to Patty next week. Alright, so would, do we need, we have a motion out here, do we need to, do we need to do a motion?
Um, I think we do. I think we need a motion to decline the intergovernmental agreement.
Are you putting motion?
I will.
Oh.
And that, probably a roll call.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, so to decline the intergovernmental agreement, should we put between City of Richmond and Casco?
Casco and we, uh, the boundaries and borders as they are.
The city, do they request this?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Stover, and it's supported by Stevens. It'll be a roll call vote. Anderson, yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
All three yeses, motion carries. All right, that brings us up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn for you.
All right. Motion to adjourn at 7:50. All those in favor, aye, three ayes, motion carries.